It'll work out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Looking forward to all that stuff, so.
Yeah, it's great.
Yeah, we get back there quite a bit. Denver's an easy flight from Portland. Full Southwest, they make it real, uh, real easy.
And are you 100% retired, or are you still?
Oh, yeah.
Go back?
Well, you're, I.
Have you ever, did Brian come to you with anything, or are you pretty, pretty clean?
No, I'm not a member of the bar, so I'm not a lawyer as well.
Not allowed to even give him advice?
No, I can't, no, no, I can't give, no, no, so I don't have any. No, I really don't have any, I'll, I'll run into them every once in a while. I, you know, I'll go in and talk to them because we own the building, so. My partner, my partner, I own the building, so.
Yeah.
Go in there. And there's, uh, two other attorneys in there as well. Then John Lindner.
Yeah.
John's renting space, he's gonna stop renting space for us. Because he's never there.
He's more, yeah, he's more, he's not there.
He, he wanted to have, you know, he thought that he would, uh.
Be more productive?
Be more productive, you know, working. Really, he's real worked something. He is. Be more productive, you know. Really, he's real worked something. He is. How about basically? Be more productive, you know. Really, he's real worked something. He is. You know, he's, he, how about basically? Be more productive, you know. Really, he's real worked something. He is. You know, he's, he, how about basically? Be more productive, you know. Really, he's real worked something. He is. You know, he's, he, how about basically? Thank you.
Responsibilities fall to our partners where the city may be at the table or may be a contributing member, but we wouldn't necessarily be the lead on some of those issues. The foundational goals and strategies that we identified were related to living wage, improved systems for economic mobility and inclusion, and maintaining and enhancing our quality of life. The target sector goals were a rate around traditional industry and advanced manufacturing, technology, entrepreneurship, hospitality, and place-based tourism, as well as craft and beverages and food systems, and education, medicine, and other sciences. Engagement and inclusion. Growth and development character. And housing opportunities. There's a lot of, I think, synergy and overlap between some of these initiatives, and oftentimes the action plans that we put together will robust roster of actions, particularly in year one and year two. We've got dozens of projects and actions that were identified in the strategic plan. It's widely available, it's on our website right now. If we haven't already sent you the link to the lay members of the Budget Committee, we'll do that as a follow-up piece. And what we really tried to do was identify those near-term, one- and two-year projects that we would spend time working on, a number of which we've already incorporated into this year's budget. So some of them will look familiar to you because we talked about them during the budget process last year. But we also tried to identify a list of projects that we felt could be prioritized and would really be not just extra high-priority work, but really help us refine the work that we do and really target our projects in a strategic way. Any questions about sort of the high and median level plan or the process that we went through to get there?
Jeff, just to let the Budget Committee members know that, again, this is a broad overview of the process that we've gone through. And Jeff indicated there's very specific actionable items under each of those headings, the seven headings. And as a council, Friday, we're going to be spending all day in our annual planning, where we'll have an opportunity to look at the strategic plan and pick a couple of actions that we feel we can put a priority on and that could be obtainable in the next one to two years. And thus, it will zero our focus to doing certain things for the next one to two years. We know that the strategic plan could be good for us. It could be a guideline for the next 10, 15 years. We'll go back to that every one to two years, picking those things that we need to execute again. And so it's an ongoing process for the council. But once we set a direction for the one to two years, we're going to be headed in that direction. So just to let you know, that's where we are as a council. We've seen this, but we've not worked with it, and that will happen. Friday, all day, we'll have our offsite. So, questions at this point? Again, this just gives you, hopefully, some vision of what we've been doing over the last 18 months, and it does have input into where we're going to be spending our money. Liam?
Just had a question about previous strategic planning for the Budget Committee, and how does that typically look? I mean, is this similar to what you've done in the past?
This is our first one.
Ah.
So, it's, you know, one of the interesting things about McMinnville, in my observation, is that the community has been really intentional and really thoughtful about how it's grown and how it's evolved and how it engages its citizens. And we see the benefit of that all around us. And yet, we haven't actually gone through a strategic planning effort quite like this before. There've been annual goal-setting sessions that have been going on for a couple of decades, probably. I know it's something that Ed warmly helped put in place early when he was the mayor. One of the things, one of the reasons that we decided to pursue a strategic plan is that the organization of the community is going through what I call a generational shift in leadership. The council is a newly constituted body, five of whom are in their first terms or five minutes into their second term in their current position. We've got nine members of our 12-member executive team who are in their current positions for six years or less. And that kind of rapid turnover hasn't really happened in this organization for a long time, if ever. It's tended to be a little bit more gradual and a little bit more consistent. And so having that significant shift and that kind of demographics playing out in other organizations, other businesses, other parts of the community, where we're seeing that sort of generational churn in leaders. And so we felt like a strategic plan would be the right mechanism to help the community move forward, particularly given that change in leadership. Jerry?
So you spoke to the fact that there's been a previous goal making?
Yes.
And over the years, has there been an effort to go back and evaluate whether those goals have been attained, whether the actions of the council will meet those goals? Or what is the goal? The real question, I guess, is how worthwhile is it to go through a goal-making session?
So I'm going to ask somebody who's been here for more than two years to answer that question. What I will say is that the goals that were adopted two years ago, in one form or another, most, if not all of those goals, ended up being woven into the strategic plan. So they don't necessarily show up in the same order or in the same words as they were two years ago. But there's nothing from two years ago in terms of kind of high-level substance that's not incorporated into this plan. And so while the plan itself is new, I think it's more of an evolution of how we've done things and the kinds of goals that the council has set over a long period of time.
And I'll just give some historic background, Jerry and Budget Committee members. We have always had a process of setting annual goals. And we come together, and it was a Friday night and an all-day Saturday, and sometimes we met with department heads and other times we didn't. We liked it when we had department heads, but we were able to have a great dialogue. Again, we picked out, in some areas that we felt were headings, topics, and set two to three goals. And then that became kind of the scorecard for our city manager. And the city manager would update the council every two months or on a quarterly basis where we were in completion of that, and when he or she expected us to be able to accomplish that goal. And so, yes, we've always had this visioning, goal-setting, and accountability to that. And it's one of the things, I think, over, you know, the last 16 years that I've been involved at the council level, has helped us be focused. But, again, it didn't have a lot of transparency. You know, what we brought to the table in talking to our constituents is what the transparency was, and where this process was primarily driven by the public, and those being on certain committees. And I'll tell you, from a council perspective, we've had to sit back a little bit and listen. And this Friday is going to be our first time to really get around. But it's, we've been waiting for 18 months to get where we're at. So, does that answer?
Oh, it does. And for the new Budget Committee members, historically, what's happened is that we have, we get a budget, and it's either, you know, PDF, big PDF, or it's a notebook, and we meet, and it's all, there's a great deal of pressure to get it all done in about two and a half hours. And the Budget Committee process has basically been spending a lot of time over maybe 1/10th or 1% of the total budget. And so, some of the Budget Committee members kind of, I characterized myself as whining a little bit last year at the Budget Committee hearing, that what are we doing, you know, as a Budget Committee? We've just come for, you know, this two, two-and-a-half, three-hour session and really don't have a huge amount of input into anything. And so that's, and I really appreciate the council for, I don't know if I appreciate coming out on a, you know, January evening like this, but it's really, I think, part of the reason we're here is because of the feedback, and the city council heard us, members of the Budget Committee last budget hearing, and so I do appreciate that.
Well, to tag on to that too, Jerry, you know, it's a process that we go through to get the proposed budget. And again, that's going to get to you probably two, maybe three weeks before our budget hearing. But what, from the Audit Committee perspective, and Marcia's a part of that, and Kelly and I, is to go back and take a look at last year's budget, because, you know, it's not going to deviate too much from that. And you can look at that, and you can have input, and do that earlier than later. Because, as you know, if we wait just till the night of the Budget Committee, sometimes it's awfully hard to, it's a cause and effect. If we take from here, where we take it from, and those types of things, we're constrained by a beginning and ending balances, and our contingency is at a certain level that we need it to be. And so, again, I think that would be one message that we would ask for you today, is, you know, start preparing for this current budget cycle by going back to last budget and taking a look at it, and having the time, and then being able to reach out to members of the Budget Committee, the council, or staff, or Jeff, or Marcia, and getting answers to your questions. Kelly?
I agree. I've been saying this for the last couple of council meetings. When you get that budget, it's about three to four inches thick. You're not, it's very difficult to absorb that in less than two weeks, which is what you'll have. So if you look at last year's, it's going to give you a really good feel for what's happening and some of the issues. And then you can hopefully do some skimming or some serious reading with the knowledge of what you've picked up from the year before. And you've got, you know, like, four months to do it in. That's probably one of the best things I can recommend.
Other questions? Can I just say, Jerry, you've got excellent taste in shirt.
Do you shop at a place called Costco like I do? That's great.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
So we're going to turn it over to Marcia now. I'm going to let you drive from here on out.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and members of the Budget Committee, I'm really happy to see all the Budget Committee members here tonight. I want to begin, actually, by issuing an open invitation to any Budget Committee member, any counselor, who would like to meet with us and get a review of the budget process. The process is structured, to a great extent, around the state of Oregon's local budget law. So the public hearings and the timing and a lot of those requirements are dictated to us by the law. But if you'd like to hear more about our internal process, I guess, and how we get together and talk about what's going to be in the budget and how we make decisions about priorities, we would be happy to go over that, too. Last November, we brought to the council a general fund first-quarter update for 2018-19, the current fiscal year. I wanted to spend just a minute reviewing that to bring everyone up to speed. In November, we reported that the general fund reserve carried forward from 1718 to 1819 with 6.8 million and approximately 30% of annual expenditures. We also reported at that time, at the end of the first quarter, that we anticipated general fund revenues and expenditures would be in line with what we expected. We periodically, well, actually continually are monitoring our budgets. The first quarter, mid-year are times especially when we look at our budgets, because that way, if something unanticipated had happened, we could make mid-year course adjustments. So tonight, though, we're talking about the forecast and the mid-year forecast. Council members and Budget Committee members, you may remember that we do a forecast as part of the budget process, and the Budget Committee, we talk about that. This is the mid-year updated forecast. Here again, we really don't see any significant variances in revenues or expenditures for 2018-19. But one of the things that we do with mid-year is, when the budget was adopted in June, we did not know for certain what our carry forward would be from 1718-19. So when you hear us talk about the reserve, it really is that amount that's carried forward from one fiscal year to the next. We didn't know what that amount was going to be in June. So in this forecast, this updated forecast, we do know now what the ending balance was at June 30 of 18, and so that's been incorporated into the forecast that we'll be looking at tonight.
May I ask a question about the increase in state marijuana revenues? Perhaps somebody else can speak to this, or perhaps you can speak to this. But everything I've been reading is that there's a glut in that market right now, and so there's a major downturn. And so is that increase something that you feel safe having in there as an assumptive increase in revenue?
I think that's a very good question. As we are going through this forecasting process, and especially looking forward to the forecast that we'll be doing as part of the budget process, we'll be going back and looking at those numbers. The state and marijuana revenues are actually a fairly small part of the general fund revenue, I think about $100,000. And the 4% would have been based on the very short history that we have accumulated to date on how that revenue has been increasing. But that is a really good question, and we do look at all those numbers as we go through the year. The mid-year forecast really is the first step in our budget process. You know, to determine whether the next year's budget's affordable, we have to look at the impact on future budgets. And the forecast helps us frame the proposed budget within that longer term. When we create the forecast, of course, we are relying on assumptions about revenues and expenditures. And as you might expect, those assumptions are based on prior-year trends, and as well as future expectations, and that might be the economy, state of marijuana revenues, looking at all of those assumptions. One of the things that we do when we're working on our, what we might call the out-years, so the last three years in the forecast, we would look at, really focusing on recurring revenues. And then we eliminate at that point grants, current grants, and one-time revenues. So we're trying to eliminate the fluctuations that might have when we have large grants or other large projects. Our recurring revenues are property taxes, franchise fees, state shared revenues, interest on investments. So this slide does show the, some of the key assumptions that we use when we're building the forecast for general fund revenues. The increase in property taxes has been very consistent over the last couple of years. It has been about 4%, and that's about where we are again for 1819. As you know, that's a really important number, because property taxes are about 55% of our general fund revenue. And, you know, we look at cable and garbage franchise fees. Really, we look at, the forecast is a very extensive spreadsheet that really goes line by line in our general ledger. So when you look at the budget and you see lines for salaries and wages, and a line for property tax revenue, and a line for insurance, the forecast actually goes to that level. So we are making some very broad assumptions in the forecast, but we put actually a lot of time and effort into that. One of the things I did want to mention is that the revenues in this table do not include any of the additional revenues that we might identify during the strategic planning process. So this table shows a couple of things. The actual revenues for 1718 is in the column on the left. The estimated is for 1819, again, the numbers that we have for mid-year. And then we're looking at forecast for 1920 and so forth. I think what's important here to look at is the trends, the dollars amount or the specific percentage. It's a forecast, so due to the nature of forecast, we know there's going to be variance between these numbers and the actual. So I think it, what is important to notice here is the trend. And what you can see is when we look at 2020 through 21, and the next couple of years, we're projecting that revenue will be fairly flat, because we do not have any additional sources of revenue built into this forecast at this point. So when we're looking at revenues for the forecast, for example, we're projecting property tax revenue. We're making assumptions about growth in assessed property values. So we may usually, we'll talk to the Planning and Building Department to see what new construction looks like. We'll talk to the Yamhill County Assessors Office. For franchise fee revenues, the main source is McMinnville Water and Light, and they pay franchise fees based on their customers' consumption of electricity, and Cascade Steel is their biggest industrial customer. So I will talk to the Finance Director at Water and Light and see if they have any projected rate increases coming up in the next year or two. General fund expenditures, we forecast very much in the same way as revenues, where we're eliminating one-time expenses in grant-related projects. Some of the key assumptions on this side are the COLA, and right now, what we have in the forecast is 2.25 to 2.5. I think that's reasonable, but again, we'll revisit that as we work on the budget. We have assumptions about increases in PERS rates, health insurance, materials and services, this is supplies, program expenses in park and rec, any number of things. And we do a pretty broad assumption about those line accounts. And, you know, from year to year, it changes, but 2% is a pretty decent trend for materials and services. The 5% increase in our insurance, it's usually where we start, but as we go through the year, as we go through the budget process, we'll get additional information from City County Insurance. And we'll look at paid claims, for example, for workers' comp and liability. That one's a little bit harder to predict, but usually City County will help us with making some estimates there. This last bullet point talks about the general fund transfer to the ambulance fund, which I think you're fairly familiar with. When, I talked to the city manager about this and this number, which looks like very, very big numbers. We talked about how there's really a lot of moving parts right now with the ambulance fund. And in the next several years, we are expecting that we'll be making some major changes. So these numbers are really projections. Here again, we have a table with projected expenditures. One of the things that we're looking at here is the CPI, which, or the Consumer Price Index, which we use to base our COLA for employees. You know, again, we're looking at PERS. The PERS Board generally will give us advisory rates and give us some recommendations on what they expect those rates to be doing going forward. I also want to point out here that these expenditures do not include the impact of the fire or police union contract negotiations. We have in this year's budget money for a salary survey for general service employees that any increases that general service employees may receive because of that salary survey are not in these numbers. And we do not have any of the big dollars for deferred maintenance of the city building in this budget.
And how did you come, how was that? Why are none of those big numbers for the deferred maintenance included at this time?
That is really something that, as an executive team, we will be getting together to talk about in the next week or two, and talking about how to incorporate the results of the facilities assessment study that we did, which is not final at this point, and incorporate that into what are our capital projects going to be? Because typically, in our capital outlay, we have, again, recurring expenditures. We know we have to maintain the police fleet. We know that we have vehicles and equipment and shelters at the park and other things that we just anticipate that's more operating. Maintenance could be fairly minor repair and maintenance projects. So I might ask Jeff if he has anything to add to that?
Sure. And the other piece of that is that part of the work that we'll be doing at the end of the month or early in next month, as those facilities reports are finalized, we'll be putting together a plan to bring that information forward to the council, probably in a series of work session conversations, so that you get a sense of what the issues are, where the gaps are, what the need is, near-term, long-term, be able to understand where it happens. Not all facilities are created equal. Some of them have more near-term needs than others. Some of them have safety improvements that may need to be made. Some of them, the amount of investment really calls into question the long-term viability of the facility. And so we're going to have a lot of information to churn through with the council, and we'll be putting together a plan for that and bringing it forward to you during the course of this winter and spring. And it'll really set the stage for part of that budget conversation. But it's not a one-year fix. You know, our facilities, some of them are 75, 100 years old. We're not going to fix it. It's not going to take 100 years to fix it, but it's not going to get fixed in one year either.
Jeff, would, another way to look at it, and going back to those charts that Marcia gave us with the projected revenues and looking at those numbers, and then looking at the projected expenditures, there's a gap between those. And so my thought is, there's going to be some hard decisions that are going to be, have to be made if we're going to continue doing what we've been doing. And that's part of that strategic planning and some of the strategic budgeting that has to be done over time, because you just can't take out of, you know, out of the operations, the way we've been going, to do the maintenance and upgrading of our buildings. We may have to take a look at other ways of doing that. It may be a levy. So we'll have to determine how appropriate our expenses are today, and we've been looking very carefully, as you know, at that. And then you go back up to those revenues and say, we don't have much control over that. So it's a catch, kind of, it's, you're chasing your tail a little bit in this whole process, as you know. So in my mind, that's what I'm thinking, along with what Jeff said, is that it's going to, it's going to find, fine-tuning that pencil and really getting down to our expenditures is a thought.
I think a lot of the focus on the strategic plan also was looking at different sources of revenue and how we might meet these needs.
That's a very nice lead-in, Mr. Mayor, to this table, which shows revenues, expenses, and the difference, which is an operating deficit in this case. Again, 1718 actual numbers are on the left. We're estimating 1819, and then the forecasted numbers. One of the things I wanted to point out here is that second row from the bottom, which is projected savings. So we always anticipate that when we're building the budget, we will have actual revenues, probably more than we budget, and expenditures less than what was budgeted. So, and a couple of places where that can happen. You know, with property taxes, we may, it might be 3.9% or 4.1%, which can lead to a difference. With marijuana taxes, like we talked about, we're still really building a trend for that and a history. And in expenditures, the, usually the biggest reason why we underspend compared to the budget is, in the budget, we assume all positions are filled all year round. And, of course, that typically doesn't happen. And so savings will come when we have turnover, and positions may remain open for a while. As you pointed out, this does show an operating deficit. And so we include that savings number because we're wanting to, again, we have budgeted numbers, but these forecasted numbers, we're including the savings because we're wanting to make our projections here more reasonable compared to the budget. This is closer to where we think we actually will be, given there's assumptions and projections built into this. And as you said, it does definitely show that expenses are growing at a faster rate than revenues. And as the operating deficit increases, of And as the operating deficit increases, of course, the reserve decreases. Again, just to point out that, as you would expect, projections in the nearer term tend to be more accurate. The farther out you get, the more variances there's going to be because, as we're in the strategic plan especially, a lot of things will change in the, by the time we get to 2020, 21 in those out-years. The city focuses on the general fund reserve. You hear us talk a lot about the general fund reserve and a percentage, what percentage is the reserve at? So we use this reserve, or sometimes you'll hear us talk about fund balance, as an indicator of the financial health of the general fund. And it's, it helps determine that appropriate level of the general fund, and it is related to, of course, expenditures. So we think that's a good benchmark to use. We do have a city policy that recommends a 25% reserve in the general fund. However, the National Government Finance Officers Association, or the GFOA, recommends a minimum reserve of 17% of annual expenditures. And that 17% is a fairly simple calculation. It's actually based on having two months' worth of operating expenses. And they recommend that as a minimum for a couple of reasons. One is that we get the majority of our property taxes in November, so we have a period of time where, in the general fund, we're receiving really limited revenue. So by October, we, our bank account is as low as it's going to be, and we want to make sure that we have an adequate reserve. It's really our working capital or provides cash flow for us until we start receiving property taxes in November. It really gives us some flexibility as well. Some of you councillor members have, remember back to '09, '10, '11, in those times, we had an adequate reserve. And when other cities were making really drastic cuts to personnel and programs and police officers, we did not need to do that because the reserve was our bridge, I think that is how, can't always refer to it. The reserve allowed us to bridge the gap between that downturn and when the economy started to improve. And it was especially important because we didn't know how long the downturn was going to last. And another reason for adequate reserve is that, is one of the things that our credit rating agencies look at when we sell bonds. So the lower our credit rating, the more our interest expense on any debt that we issue. This table does show that we're, we were at 30%, as I mentioned, at the end of 17, 18. Estimated is, we're projecting that at the end of this current fiscal year, 18, 19, that will be 20%, and then it's declining fairly steadily thereafter. Here again, I want to point out that at the end of 18, 19, it may be 22%, and it may be 18% in 19, 20. There's a lot of variables in these forecasts. And again, I think it's important to look at the trend, maybe more than just a specific Again, some of you have been here a little bit longer, might remember that the general fund, we have actually had a 45, 48% reserve in the past. And while that gives us a lot of security, I guess, it, it really is making it, the reserve may have been higher than it needed to be, really, because when the reserve is that high, you basically have money in the bank that, or that you are not spending providing services to the citizens. So we are looking at finding that reasonable balance between stashing our money away in case something really bad might happen someday and what's an adequate amount. So we, we're looking at somewhere between 17 and 20% for that.
And just to console people here, because it looks pretty drastic for the next three or four years, it's looked like this, the projection, every year for the last five years. And we seem to pull it out every year. So I don't want you to get totally overwhelmed by this. It's just, you know, this is how it looks right now because there's a lot of things that can happen in between now and then.
I know that Sal has a question or comment, but let me expand on that a little bit. And one of the reasons that happens is that we've got sort of this structural imbalance, if you will, where our expenses tend to grow at a pretty steady rate and our revenues grow at a steady rate. There's just a gap between those. And from year to year, our organization, like many's, makes midterm corrections. And you sort of write your budget for the time you have. And what that tends to do is it, it sort of keeps that curve in place and keeps moving it out a year at a time. And until you either come up with a long-term revenue strategy where your revenue growth matches your expense growth, or if you decide to make reductions in expenses significantly so that you match the growth curve of your revenues, you're always going to see that gap out there at some point in the future.
Comparatively, though, to previous years, we have increased services tremendously over the last few years, including things like there was a 20-year hiring freeze at the police department that was unfrozen, maybe, what, three years ago? And other expanses of services, a new substation at the fire department and new equipment there. And, but some of those, especially the hiring increases, while, in my opinion, necessary, absolutely necessary, those are more substantial, long-term costs. Yeah. And so would you, not to be a Cassandra about the numbers, but, you know, but there, but there is a difference, I would say, going into this year than in previous years with a lot of those increased fixed costs.
And the strategic plan focus on other ways to bring balance to this.
So another way to reflect that is that, over the last decade, we relied on those reserves to keep things relatively stable in the organization. Again, when, I mean, I worked in the organization for nine years. We reduced our staffing level by 20% in less than three fiscal years. There certainly were some reductions that were made here and there in this organization, but for the most part, we didn't make really steep and drastic cuts. But what we also didn't do is we didn't invest to keep up with either growing demands of service or needs that were being deferred. And so over the course of that decade, we stayed pretty stable in terms of our non-public safety employment level. And last year, when we added a number of positions into the general fund, it was really the first reinvestment in staffing in non-public safety operations in the city for about a decade. We'd, we'd made some reductions and we'd largely held the line. And so even with those reductions, we've only seen about a 1% increase in staffing for non-public safety investments over the last 10 years. We have been making significant investments in public safety, particularly the last three or four years. Over that same decade, we've increased staffing by about 20% in the police department and about 30% in the fire department.
Marcia, can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
With regards to PERS, how certain are we of the impact of that in these projections?
PERS has, of course, we know what our rates will be July 1 of 2019 and that they will be in place for that biennium. The rates change every two years. So when they change again at July 1 of 2021, PERS does provide advisory rates. And they also let us know the status, ongoing status of the unfunded liability and what we can expect going forward. So I think this is where the forecast, where we really see a benefit from the forecast. Because again, once we get out to 2021, things are going to be much different. But we do have a pretty solid number for the PERS employer contribution rates.
Good. Great. Thanks.
Marcia, how do these numbers compare to the page Roman numeral four from the 2018-2019 budget that we adopted? I'm trying to get a sense of, you know, the page Roman numeral four we had, had general fund resources by type and gave a dollar amount of $28,738,695. And then general fund requirements, $28,738,695. So they balanced out, you know, in the budget that we adopted. And so what I'm trying to get a sense of is how these figures that you're giving us tonight relate to what we adopted.
Well, I think without having the numbers in front of me, I think I would go back to the way we budget, of course. Like I said, we assume all positions are filled all year round. And revenues for government agencies are really fairly predictable if you're not adding some new revenue stream or really expanding on ones that you already have. So really, we track pretty closely to the budget. You know, we are looking all the time, monitoring at how are the departments spending their operational money? How are salaries in franchise? How are we compared to the budget with those numbers? And so the variances really come in, again, when we have turnover and unfilled positions, sometimes we'll have projects that we budgeted for, like a repair and maintenance on a roof that we didn't, we don't get done in that fiscal year. So I'm not sure I'm answering your question.
Yeah. I mean, what I was trying to get a sense of is if this, these numbers that you're giving us, I mean, I know some of the expenditures that we've had that were not anticipated in the budget that would have increased that, you know, what's published online. But I'm just trying to figure out, it seems like there's just a big difference in the, what I would have anticipated, the revenues being with the expenditures, given what we And I guess I'm just trying to get at Apple's, Apple's understanding of how these numbers relate to the numbers that were presented to us in the, in the budget that we adopted.
So Sal, you're looking at the budget document for 2000.
What we adopted versus what they're presenting.
And I apologize, I'm not ignoring you. I think Jeff is working out.
Jeff's just trying to eagerly find it. Well, and I can do that. I don't mean to delay the meeting. I can get that information offline.
That's okay. I think I can get to it here pretty quick.
Again, in the budget document, and I'm just talking off the top of my head, we have two categories. We've got the general funds, and then we have all the funds coming in that are almost reserved to go to certain places that we have no control. And I think what we're looking at in tonight's presentation is the general fund.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
Quick question in relate, in relation to that. Normally, you, you go through a year-end process, correct? Where you do the analysis to find and to determine what you've spent in the prior year? So year-end closeouts is something that you're working on currently or perhaps already have established, correct?
Our fiscal year ends June 30.
June 30. Okay. So you did that back in June for the prior year budget?
Correct.
So you would have those numbers available online to the public?
Comparison of actual to budget. I do not believe that that is online.
Okay. So does that, does that actually come into, into play when you're determining the next year's budget?
Yes.
Okay.
So I think, I think what you're pointing to is, you know, I said, we do really budget down to the line item. So we're going to look, and the departments are, do a great job of looking at their budgets and really monitoring them very closely. We have, rarely have to do budget amendments, other than in situations where something happens that we didn't expect to happen. But yes, we're looking at, you know, insurance would be a good example, any other number of workers' comp claims, that kind of thing, to carry forward, I guess, what we learned from the prior fiscal year into the next year's budget.
And so tonight, there's a good example of making an amendment to the budget for, if I'm not mistaken, for the airport fund and the dollars that we need to put towards the, the repair of the gas tank, tanks out there. Sal, I think.
Yeah, it helps to sit next to a CPA at these meetings. So Kelly, Kelly corrected the question that I had, and I can address that with staff outside of the meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
So Leanna, were your questions answered?
It wasn't actually a question. It was, I understand the business process, and I was just helping you to respond at that point.
Appreciate that.
Well, the other piece is Marcia will come to the council and update us as to where we sit to budget on a, maybe twice a year possibly. And, and then that report is a part of our packets. So that is available to anyone that would be following our agenda. But I don't know that you post that on the finance page of what that is, because it's just a report to council, but it is available.
Here again, I just want to mention again, looking at these numbers, and, and they decline, as I said, steadily. But where we, and we are faced with challenges like other governmental agencies in the state of Oregon. So, you know, looking to the future, we do have a challenge in finding a way to mitigate that gap between revenues and expenditures and maintaining the adequate reserve. A strategic, long-range financial plan is going to really be an essential part of, of that process. So we've talked about a long-range financial plan for the city in the past. And one of the things that we can do is look, look to the National Government Finance Officers Association, the GFOA, which has quite a number of well-vetted, very reasonable best practices. And as I was looking at long-range financial planning and the GFOA's best practices, they describe long-term financial planning as combining fiscal forecasting with strategizing. And it works best as a part of an overall strategic plan. Couple of high-level steps there, determine the scope, they recommend five to 10 years, of course, do an analysis, talk to your internal and external stakeholders, identify your service policies and procedures, and then adopt and execute the plan. So of those two aspects of the long-range plan that they've identified, financial forecasting, this is what we do. It's a process of projecting revenues and expenditures over a long-term period, using assumptions and economic conditions, scenarios, and other salient variables. So we do that, I think, and we do it fairly well. The other piece of that was the strategizing, which we certainly have undertaken with our strategic plan. And the long-term financial plan is, I like this description, it's a process of aligning financial capacity with long-term service objectives. So as with any plan, after it's adopted, strategies have to be put in place and to put that plan into action. And one of those steps could certainly be identifying funding that would be required to achieve our goals. And I guess the last thing that the, I would say from the GFOA is that execution of that plan is where strategies become operational through the budget, financial performance measures, similar to our mid-year updates and our check-ins that we do with the council periodically through the year. And lastly, of course, action. I think actually that brings us back around to the strategic plan that we I think actually that brings us back around to the strategic plan that we talked about earlier. I really liked how the GFOA described this process. Is there any other questions?
So why don't we, why don't we start with budget committee members? And so, John, any questions, any concerns that you have as we try to position ourselves to be able to understand our role as a budget committee?
I do have a little bit of a concern that the, the goal for the reserve seems to be eroding. And I hear the goal that this body put forward of 25% reserve, and then I hear another goal put forward for the, the GFOA, which is 17 to 20%. And I would, would hope that the goal set by this body would be the one that staff shoots for.
Thank you, John.
Jerry, any, any comments from your perspective?
Well, you know, like, the decline in the reserve is striking, and I don't know that I actually understand why, why that is. So, you know, hopefully I'll, I'll find that out.
Okay. I'll go down, Drew.
So just from my background, I don't necessarily, I would echo maybe the long-term concerns of the budget, of the budget reserves eroding. But given it's already high level, I wouldn't necessarily, it's not exactly disastrous right now or anything like that. But from my own background, we're at our current point in the business cycle, it is a little bit risky. If, say, in the next five years, we were to experience a recession of some sort and we were still drawing down on the, on the budget reserves, I'd be concerned. But, I mean, we're currently sitting at, what, somewhere between 20 and 30% right now. I think we still have ample, ample time if that becomes an issue, so.
Thank you, Drew. Leanna, any other questions?
You know, my, my, my viewpoints on a reserve is that it's going to be used when you have deficits in other areas of the budget. But my biggest concern would be your operating income having, having a deficit like that, you're not able to add more operations to the budget at all at this point because you have negatives that you're dealing with. So I think some of the concern as a budget committee, we would want to focus in on what we can do to raise our, raise our revenues, to meet those demands.
Thank you, Leanna. Cherry?
Well, it all depends on the priorities you guys set in your meeting on Friday and the process that you go through in setting those priorities. And then that really kind of gives us our marching orders.
Can I say one more thing?
Sure.
I just want to say thank you for all you've done with the strategic planning and efforts you've made as a committee yourselves. It's definitely reflecting.
Thank you. I'll open it up to members of the council. Any, any further concerns or direction that you want to give staff as we're getting prepared for the budget? I'll start down, Zach. Remy. Wendy. Adam. Sal. And Kelly. And the last thing that I just want to share, and I've shared this many times, and those that we've interviewed for the budget committee, I've shared this, but how fortunate we are with our finance department. Bar none, and I've seen a lot of budgets, and that's one thing that I look at and I go on websites to other communities within Oregon, and how readable and user-friendly and the narrative that goes along with our budgets. It could be all numbers. But really, what we're trying to do is blend a storage, a story by department of where, what, what accomplishments have we had and where we're going, and unmet needs so that we have an opportunity to look and come away and say, boy, I get a full, I get a full picture in this department. And then the hard decisions are made. And that's done with, you know, with department heads who really know their business, and then Jeff having an opportunity along with Marcia, being able to really fine-tune that, bringing it to, to the budget committee. And I'll tell you, budget committee, you get the first look at the budget as, as the council does, okay? And so it's taking ownership and preparing and asking questions and going in to see what's happening. We all have that opportunity. I've never had, I've never had a situation where I've gone into Marcia or Jeff and says, help me understand this, and it's, no, it's none of your business, just walk away. You know, I've never had that. And I walk away better prepared. So I'll put a little onus back on us, all of us. You know, some, some of us have had many, many years in this process, and some have had not even one year yet. So we're going anywhere from 25 years of experience on this table to a couple of months, okay? And we're all there, but we're all together looking from different perspectives, and that's why we have the makeup of the budget committee the way it is. We all have different perspectives, we have different experiences, but I would say that we all have a passion for numbers and understanding the story that the numbers give. So Marcia, taking back to your staff, you know, we, we don't tell them enough how much we appreciate what they do, and especially under your direction, because from my perspective, you're the orchestrator of what we have in our hands today under your direction. And, and, you know, we've been able to provide a system and a, a computer system that allows us, the software, to do some phenomenal things compared to where we used to be, and you're utilizing that to the nth degree. So I say thank you and take that back to staff. And Jeff, you know, your insightfulness of, of where we need to go, you bring tremendous value. And, you know, hopefully we'll work as a total body to be where we need to. And I will, I will echo, you know, that the reserve is something that we have to keep our eye on. And I'm, and I feel really good under looking to the future where Marcia says, increasing revenues with a goal of keeping the reserve between 17 and 20. It's there. We're focused on that. We just need to make sure that this process doesn't get away from us and that we're making the right decisions. So with that being said, thank you so much for the presentation tonight. And budget members, thanks for taking some time out of your busy schedules to be with us earlier in the year. We'll go ahead and conclude our joint meeting with the, the budget committee this evening.
Good job, Marcia.
Took us up to seven o'clock and it's great when we have that kind of participation. So, thanks for bearing with us this evening. And it looks like we're all together. Melissa, are we all set? Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone to the January twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen, regularly scheduled city council meeting this evening. And I'll call on Adam to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
It's great to see those that are with us this evening. Uh, so we'll go through our agenda. The first thing that we have this evening are comments from citizens. And this is the opportunity to anyone in our audience that wants to come before the council and speak, uh, we'll give them an opportunity. You can speak on any topic other than a matter in litigation, quasi judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for public hearing at some future date. Again, we do have a public hearing this evening. Do we?
Not a public hearing.
Nope, okay, I, okay, not a public hearing, so no public hearing this evening?
On the supplemental budget, yes.
On the sup-
Not on the land use-
On, on the supplemental budget. So if you're here to speak on the supplemental budget, there will be a, a public hearing this evening. Anything else? If you would please, uh, fill out one of the public comment cards and get that up to Melissa. I have one in front of me right now. Scott Torkelson. Good, Scott, I'll just call you Scott, I'm Scott, so we're, okay? Scott, if you'd come up and, uh, you can address the, the council. Again, we'll give you three minutes to, uh, share your thoughts with us. And, uh, again, it's good to have you here.
Thanks. So I ran to Staples and I made some coffee, so I'd like to ask you if you could take one and pass it down to two groups. But I only made seven, so.
Okay.
All right, so I'm here, a couple of months ago, I was here before, um, about the industrial park. And unfortunately, I'm back here again, and I just wanted to kind of say squeaky wheel gets the grease. If you could look at the first group of the color photos of our industrial park. So what all happened here is a couple nights ago, uh, I was working late, I was locking up the store, and whenever that happened, six, seven o'clock, I'm in an industrial park and everyone's gone. When I leave, there are hundreds of cars out there in the daylight, but in the nighttime, everyone is gone. And a couple guys came in with bicycles, pulling a child, uh, seats behind them, and it was just full of junk. And they pulled into my parking lot, and everything is closed, and it was very, very obvious that they're just cruising for more junk, I guess. And I said, hey, can I help you guys out? And they just both looked at me and said, F you. This is right after I had others, had other stuff stolen from my industrial park, okay? And I just started to get mad and frustrated. And I'm thinking, this is just not the direction where we should be going. So, uh, when you look at the pictures, I took video, I went down Dustin, and I went down, um-
Marsh.
Marsh, thank you. And then I also noticed, Doc, by my place now in the turnout, there are four places. It's just been spreading and spreading. Um, I took a video, you can kind of see where I pushed a stop there, and I just took self pictures. But, uh, I counted, uh, twenty-seven down Dustin and fifteen down Marsh, and then four out by me. What's interesting was you drive down Riverside, and it's really too bad, that the very top picture, that is on the corner of our industrial park. That is the heart of this town, and that vision, that picture, is on the very corner of Riverside and, uh, and Marsh, all right? What's also amazing is that if you go down Dustin, there's a little bit of a dip at the very end. And here's my challenge to all of you, to go down that cul-de-sac and turn around like I did. If anyone would like to see that video, I can give it to you. But it is amazing, the amount of junk. It was like a dumpster exploded back there. You can't see it from Riverside. If you think that it looks ugly from Riverside, I dare you to drive down, just turn around. You don't have to talk to anyone, but just drive down to the bottom of the court and come back, and you're gonna be amazed. All right, I move on. I started thinking, if this kind of environment, if I put this up into my, my, I live here in town, if I put one of these homes, these houses in mine, I would get a ticket. I would not be, I would not be allowed to, and I own that land. I pay taxes on that land. And I'm not allowed to put those kind of structures permanent, because you look at those, those are permanent structures people are living in now. Now, I pay taxes here, so I would look at the, uh, ticket, and I would say, dang damn it, I should probably pay this, and I would pay this. But all these individuals have no interest, you know, they've got no, it's all entitlement. And that is just bugging the bejeebers out of me. Okay, um.
Fifteen more seconds, Scott, and I know you've passed things out, but we've given you a little more time.
Okay. If we need to, what I want to get at is that the second part, Dad always said, if you've got a problem, solve the frickin' problem. All right, so what I have been told is that you can't just move these individuals, okay? Uh, what I, the second group is four different sections still in the city of McMinnville. They're pretty much all out by the airport. One through four is off of, is off of Airport Road. Crookshank, you take Crooks, take Highway eighteen, take Crookshank, and take Airport Road. Airport Road is within the city of McMinnville. So, pictures one through four is that area. And you can see it's flat, you could put them out there, and they would not be a detriment to my business, to all the other businesses that are making McMinnville great. If the city of McMinnville feels obligated to give free tent space and RV space, let's not make it to the detriment of the businesses that are actually making this city great. Five through eight is, uh, Armory Way Road. It's a double wide there. Nine through eleven is Crookshank, not sure if it's McMinnville or not, but if you can. And the last one is out by Cyrus.
Okay. Uh, Scott, thank you so very much. And again, this is comment coming this way. Is this a way to get ahold of you, the number that you put down? I, I think I'll reach out to you and just kind of update you to what, some of the things that we're doing. Personally, I'll just get ahold of you.
I just see over the year, it's just getting worse and worse. I've now counted, you know. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Scott. Do we have anyone else that, uh, has turned in a comment card? Seeing none, then we'll move on to our agenda this evening. Initially, we had a consent agenda, but we note that Resolution twenty nineteen oh seven, uh, that was originally on the consent agenda, has been moved and will be heard later in our agenda this evening. That takes us to the public hearing that we have scheduled tonight on the supplemental, uh, budget hearing related to the airport maintenance fund. And so, Marcia, I'll call on you to run us through that, if you would.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this resolution that we will be in front of you tonight proposes a supplemental budget for the airport maintenance fund. The budget is necessary due to unanticipated repairs of the AV gas tank and fuel system at the airport. I believe a, uh, contract came before this, uh, council a couple of meetings ago relating to this tank. Uh, the estimated cost of that project is a hundred and seventeen thousand. So with a supplemental budget, we're transferring a hundred and twenty of thousand of contingency to capital outlay. The, uh, public hearing is required because the budget transfers an amount which exceeds fifteen percent of total appropriations in the airport fund. And in, and because of that, the council is required to hold a public hearing and to take public comment prior to adoption of the budget.
Thank you, Marcia. Uh, with that, then I'm going to open up the public hearing for comments. And anyone here to comment on the supplemental budget? Call one more time. Go ahead, Marcia.
I have one question.
Why don't you, why don't you come up and introduce yourself for our records? Name and address.
Kathy Andreas, um, one-one-five-one Monroe Street in Lafayette. I work in the community of, for the community of water and light. I'm an accountant there. I'm just curious, um, what the tanks are for. Are they for general purposes for all departments, or are they just for the airport?
I think I will defer that question to Mr. Bissett, who is our community development director.
Clearly hear the question.
Are the tanks, are the questions for negotiation here at the airport? Are they for general use for all departments in the city, or are they just for airport use?
So they're aviation fuel tanks, it's, uh, um, avi- it's fuel for, uh, general aviation aircraft, piston aircraft. Uh, it's, uh, one of two fuel tanks we have at the airport that service the aircraft that, uh, use our-
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Any other comments? Hearing done, I'll go ahead and close our public hearing. That takes us to consider Resolution twenty nineteen dash ten, a resolution adopting a supplemental budget for fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, and making a budgetary transfer of appropriate appropriation authority related to airport maintenance, uh, fund. And so we've had a little, uh, discussion. Anything that you'd like to add on your discussion of that, Marcia, for the council? Okay. Uh, so now I'll just open it up for any questions or comments, uh, from members of the council. Seeing none, um, I'll ask for a motion to approve Resolution number twenty nineteen dash ten.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Remy and seconded by, I think, Adam. All those in favor, uh, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Hearing none. This Resolution, number twenty nineteen dash ten, passes unanimously six to six. Thank you. Uh, our second resolution this evening is Resolution twenty nineteen dash seven, a resolution awarding the purchase of, uh, twenty-seven pieces of landscape, uh, structure play equipment from Ross Recreation Equipment by the Park and Rec, and Rec Department. And so I'll call on both Susan and Ann to bring us up to speed on this good information. And this was the information that was on the consent agenda, is now in your packet, you go back to the front and you'll have all the debt, all the information that they'll be talking about. Susan?
Thank you, Mayor. We just have one clarification, a slight correction from the resolution, which is the why, reason why it was pulled off the consent agenda. Um, the resolution should be, uh, authorizing the city to engage in an agreement with landscape structures. Um, they are the manufacturer of the equipment. Uh, we inadvertently wrote the distributor in there, which is Ross Recreation. So we just want to make sure that we're correcting the resolution before we purchase. It's always great news to be here on this project. Um, Ann and I can answer any questions you have, but that's the real reason why it's been pulled off the consent agenda.
Great. So there was a great staff, um, write-up on that, and, uh, and so, um, any questions that anyone would have for our Parks and Recreation? This is one that we've been working long and hard on, and, uh, this is our, uh, second attempt, uh, to be within our budgeted amounts to do that. So any questions for, uh, Susan or Ann?
Questions, but it's very exciting.
Yes, it really is. Okay, hearing done, then I will ask a motion to approve Resolution twenty nineteen dash seven.
So moved.
Second.
And, uh, so it's been moved by Kelly and seconded by Wendy. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Uh, Resolution twenty nineteen dash seven passes unanimously six to six. That takes us to our next resolution under consideration this evening, which is twenty nineteen dash eight. And it's a resolution establishing, uh, revised sanitary sewer user fees and repealing Resolution twenty eighteen dash twelve. And I'll call on Mike Bissett, our community development director, to update the council on this.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'll refer you to the staff report that's in your packet, as well as a copy of the proposed resolution, and a copy of the previously reviewed and approved, uh, two thousand and fifteen sewer equity report. Uh, in December of two thousand and seventeen, the council considered and approved the updated wastewater financial plan, which concluded that, uh, two-point-eight percent rate increases were required annually, um, to cover, uh, planned capital improvements and operating costs and wastewater services. Uh, I've included in your packet a chart that shows, uh, planned capital drawdown, as well as reserve amounts over the planning period. Um, and you'll recall, or many of you will recall, that we, we, uh, do a biannual review of the wastewater financial plan. So our next plan review of the financial plan for wastewater will be at the end of this calendar year. Resolutions before you this evening includes a two-point-eight percent rate increase. The equity portion of the approved two thousand and fifteen, uh, review has concluded, uh, concluded with the rates you adopted for July, uh, first of two thousand and eighteen. So unless there are any questions, staff would recommend you adopt the resolution setting rates effective July first of two thousand and nineteen.
Thank you, Mike. And again, just for, uh, those on the council, you know, when we're looking at, uh, sewer infrastructure, wastewater, uh, infrastructure, we've been able to pay as we go. And that's, I think, uh, has had, has had a little higher sewer rate, but we don't have to go out for bonds, we're able to keep up and doing the things that we need to. And so, uh, this just keeps us in line with that process that we've been doing for years, and, uh, keeps us well within our compliance. So, any questions for Mike?
I have a few.
Go ahead, Remy.
Um, so, i- in the, um, in the sewer fee schedule, um, it says that multifamily duplex and manufactured home parks comprised of individual single-family units or mixed-use structures, uh, shall be charged on the basis of the total number of single-family living units and/or individual commercial units that receive water service from one meter. So then, in my reading of this, if, um, if, if you are in a duplex, if you're living in a duplex, then, um, you'll actually be, those two units combined will actually be paying just under, um, what a single-family, um, uh, unit would be paying. But anything above that, um, uh, would be a, a multiplying factor. And so if you had a, um, a, a, a higher number of units, uh, any apartment complex, uh, mostly in the city of McMinnville, then, is gonna be paying a, um, total has, substantially higher rate on a, on the single meter, if I'm reading this correctly. And so I kind of, I went through and picked out a few things that I'll, just kind of all wrap up here. So instead of it being kind of a parsed-out question, maybe you can follow my, it's probably slightly, uh, uh, all over the place thinking. But, um, so one of the things that I noticed was, uh, in some of the reporting, uh, multifamily use is, um, reported, um, altogether, and then there's other places where, uh, single-family homes are, um, or, or, uh, individual units or individual meters, um, the data applies to, um, single-family residents and multifamily residents, um, because it's based on meter. So the, so I saw a kind of a discrepancy in, um, being able to pull some conclusive information from that data, because it didn't necessarily align. And then in the equity report, um, it talks really clearly about kind of, you know, equally distributing these costs among different types of system users, um, and then goes on to say including above, uh, domestic strength customers. But the conclusion of the report is that industrial users, while they're a very low number of the overall users, their rates actually go down, um, whereas the rates for small and moderate volume, um, customers is going to increase, um, three to five percent. So, let me see if I have any other things pointed out in here. Oh, and the other thing that I noted is that, of course, wastewater costs for the city are higher, the more people are using the wastewater stream, right? So I saw that there could be, um, that, that there could be some justification for it in, in that. But that relates specifically to, tho- those costs are related specifically to the pipes that are used. And so I was thinking, well, if you've got a, you know, if somebody puts in a, an apartment complex, there, they pay to get the, the sewer lateral right out to the, um, to the main line. So, uh, ultimately, what I am concerned about is that, um, our lowest income residents are carrying a higher burden of the cost than those that are, uh, able to pay at a higher rate, and our industrial customers are actually seeing a decrease, whereas the residential customers are all seeing an increase. So, um, that's kind of my scatterbrained concern.
Understood, I believe. The equity report that you reviewed was a four-year plan that has actually been fully implemented. And so, four years, four-plus years ago, we ba- we, we reviewed the equity in the system, and it included all of those factors that you noted, and embarked on an adjustment of rates over a four-year period. And so, as of July first of two thousand and eighteen, that plan was fully implemented. And what you have before you tonight is just a continuing, uh, rate increase related to covering capital and operating costs. And so, um, at the time, when we adopted the equity plan, there was, uh, um, quite a bit of discussion with our rate consultant, Deb Golarde, on what the components that were involved in how you, uh, spread costs equitably over the system. And I think those are some of the finer points that you're pointing out this evening. When we, um, embark on another review of the, uh, plan in two thousand and nineteen, elements such as, uh, ability of low-income residents to pay could be incorporated into it, into the study. And Deb could speak to us about what options might be related to that. Your initial comment or question related to meter charges, though, I think I wanted to make sure that I understood what you were pointing out. That relates to, uh, converting, um, uh, the particular uses to equivalent, uh, dwelling units. And so duplex actually would pay two charges, uh, multi-plan, uh, multifamily unit, let's say if twenty-six units would play, pay tw- twenty-six unit charges and such. And so what that's doing for those various types of residential is establishing how many base charges they would pay on their bill. And so I don't know that a duplex pay, I, I didn't understand what you were pointing out on how a duplex would pay less than a single family. It's actually paying two base charges versus a single family would play, pay one, and so.
Um, so the, uh, I, I, I got that in one of the, I got the double, the, that it would pay, uh, that they would be paying just shy of, based on one of the, one of the, um, charts of numbers in here that showed, um, a lesser rate for multifamily units, but as you multiplied it, then it, it went up. But maybe I just misread that. And I, and I, I do recall that when this came before us the last time, I, I think I raised my same concern, uh, at that time about, um, multifamily units taking a, paying a larger percentage, um, uh, or perhaps not a larger percentage, but, but paying at a, a multiplying level, um, rather than, um, single-family residential units would.
An underlying foundation of our wastewater plan is the, the challenge that the city has with, um, inflow infiltration in our system. And, um, Deb spent quite a bit of time, um, at the time we did the equity review, explaining that those costs are spread across the system, sort of, um, uniformly, rather than, um, creating a disproportionate responsibility for inflow and infiltration. disproportionate responsibility for inflow and infiltration to a large water user because their, their water use isn't necessarily translating to the system-wide problem that we're trying to address with our capital plans. And that's the removal of inflow and infiltration from the entire system. And so a, a, a single-family house and a large water user sort of equally share the need, there is a proportionality related to the flow. You need a bigger pipe to handle a large user's flow, but the amount of ionized in a bigger pipe isn't necessarily proportional to the size of the pipe. And so the amount of leaks in a large pipe can be the same as the amount of leaks in a low pipe, and they're letting in similar amounts of rainfall and groundwater. And so there is a bit of science into setting what the base rate should be. And then we've had some very robust discussions over time on how high that base rate should be compared to volume charge and what that burden does place on lower-income household versus a commercial and industrial business. And so I think absolutely critical to have those discussions, again, when we review the financial plan update at the end of the calendar year. And certainly can look to options if there are some communities that look to options for how low-income customers are treated related to sewer rates, whether there are opportunities for donations to be made to cover bills, or whether or not there are certain funds put aside to carry folks through tough times and, and things like that. And so.
Okay, thank you. And just if you want to know where I got my numbers for my doubling down, it's on page 26 of the equity report, at the, at the top of the page. Thank you.
Thank you, Remy. Any other questions or discussion?
I just have one question. Mike, what kind of response have you had as you've implemented these changes with the public? Has there been any, have you had any kind of dialogue or anything like that with?
Well, certainly, those of us, those of you that have been on this sanitary sewer journey with us for a number of years know that in the early 90s, the city had one of the lowest sewer rates in the state. And then with requirements to build a new treatment plan and the requirements to stop sanitary sewer overflows into the Yamhill River, we've invested millions and millions of dollars of capital in our wastewater system. And literally overnight, we went from the lowest rates to some of the highest rates in the state in the mid-90s. And it's, and we took out a bit of debt to cover construction of treatment plants, pump stations, and to build bigger pipes and to fix pipes. Those debts have been paid off, and the significant capital that's in front of you to address growth in the community as well as the aging assets that we have is a pay-as-you-go plan. And consequently, over the last two decades, other communities have had to deal with similar problems, and we are no longer necessarily the poster child for high sewer rates, highest sewer rates, because other communities have had to face the challenges that our community and the policymakers in the early 90s faced regarding sewer rates. So we get complaints from time to time about how high McMinnville sewer rates are. That's been constant. I've not noticed any difference as we've done the equity review between the amount of folks that are concerned about the sewer rates. And it's, so really, it's contingent upon us to continue to tell them the story of why the rates are what they are and what it takes to fund wastewater services in McMinnville, and what that investment in rates has bought and what will continue to buy moving forward. We're fortunate that we're able to fund significant capital investments in the system, both to accommodate growth and to deal with aging assets without taking on additional debt, which would incur a burden of financing charges and interest charges that would be on the communities.
Yeah, that's great. And, and I know that you had hired, you're actually have been working on telling the story more with the public. And has that, has that, have you had a lot of success with that so far, or is it just still at the beginning stages still?
So we've had a public affairs specialist in the department for a year or so now, and she's done a great job of, of giving us a social media presence, updating the website related to some of the services in community development. She's worked with planning as well on some of the projects and efforts they have before us. She has created a new sewer rate brochure that's on the website that provides information about what the, how the rates are calculated and what those rates are purchasing for the consumer. And so I think, and the budget that we talked about earlier this evening, I think we spent quite a bit of time in the wastewater section of the budget, explaining what the needs are, what the costs associated with those needs are, and how we're paying for them moving forward. So there are a number of different sort of balls in the air regarding telling the message that we continue to try to be better at.
Great, all right. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Wendy. Any other questions? Discussion? Hearing none, then I will take a motion to approve resolution 2019-8.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Kelly and seconded by Wendy. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Resolution 2019-8 passes unanimously, six to six. Our next resolution for consideration this evening is resolution 2019-9, a resolution established revise system development charges, C D, S C D, CDs.
S D C.
S E Ds? Whatever. System development charges, okay, it's been a long day. Pertaining to parks and recreation, sanitary sewer and transportation and repealing resolution 2018-8. And so I'll call on Mike to explain this resolution to us. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Again, there's a brief staff report in your packet as well as copies of pertinent ordinances, the prior S D C res, system development charge resolution, as well as a summary of what the proposed S D C changes for fiscal year 1920 translate to. So the municipal code, as adopted by the city council, allows for the adjustment, annual adjustment of system development charges for transportation, sanitary sewer, and parks based on a construction cost index that is contained in the engineering news record report for Seattle. That index between January 1st of 18 and January 1st of 19 grew by 4.9%. That index takes into consideration a combination of cost increases related to building construction materials as well as labor cost increases over that calendar year. Per the S D C ordinance, we bring a resolution to you this evening, adjusting the sanitary sewer, sanit, Mayor, you've got me doing it now. System development charges for sanitary sewer transportation and parks, 4.9% effective July 1 of 2019. For context, the index for the prior fiscal year grew by 7.7%. And we actually did adjust our rates, 7.7% on July 1 of 2018. If adopted this evening, we will begin the public outreach at the counter with the help of Heather's staff. Include information in building permit applications, noting that the fees will go in, fee increases will go in effect July 1 for all permits that are applied for after, on or after July 1. So unless there are any questions, I'd recommend you adopt the resolution as presented.
Thank you, Mike. And so council discussion on S D Cs? Or any questions? Hearing none, I will ask for a motion to approve resolution 2019-9.
So moved.
Second.
It has been approved by Kelly and seconded by, was that Remy? Remy. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, indicate by saying nay. Resolution 2019-9 passes unanimously, six to six. This takes us to our first ordinance this evening, first reading with possible second reading of ordinance number 5061. We will now consider the matter of ordinance 5061. Does any counselor object to having the ordinance read by title only? Okay, so I will ask the city attorney to please read the ordinance into the record.
This is the first reading of ordinance number 5061, an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan designations from residential to commercial on existing properties and lots of record, rezoning said property from R4 PD, multiple-family residential plan development to OR, office residential, and amending an existing plan development overlay district to remove said property from the plan development.
Thank you, David. We'll call on senior planner Chuck Darnell to present to the council. Welcome, Chuck.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilors. So this is ordinance number 5061, which is three concurrent requests on a property at 600 Southeast Baker Street, a comprehensive plan, map amendment, zone change, and plan development amendment. So this is the location of the site on Southeast Baker Street, Highway 99. It's right near where the couple comes together on the south end of town, across the street from Walgreens. It's the prior site of the Columbus Elementary School, which was damaged in an earthquake in the 90s and demolished, and has been under ownership of Linfield College since then. So it's a vacant site today. The specific requests before you are first to amend the comprehensive plan, map designations from residential to commercial. You can see what's proposed there on the screen. And then subsequently, request to rezone that same property from multiple-family residential, which also has a plan development overlay that exists on it today, which I'll discuss in a little bit more detail, and change the zoning to office residential. And you'll note that the zone change applies only to the portion of the property that's outside of the floodplain. We have the floodplain designation on both our comprehensive plan map and the zone, zoning map. They're proposing just to change the zoning and the designation of the property outside of the floodplain. This is a concept plan that just shows the general development plan that's intended by the applicant. It's not binding on the site in any way, but was provided as a concept of what they are intending to develop. It shows a 10,000-square-foot office building and then surrounded by areas for future development, which they've identified as future residential uses. So looking through the applicable review criteria, I provided much more detail in the staff report and in the, the decision documents that are attached to the ordinance. So I'll just touch on some of the high, high notes through this presentation. But the first criteria for both the comprehensive plan amendment and the zone change is that the amendment's consistent with the other goals and policies in our comprehensive plan. So we have a chapter and goals and policies related to natural resources and preserving those. I already mentioned before that they aren't proposing to change the floodplain area. That will stay the same. They've included some statements in their application that they're actually going to work with Linfield and doing some native vegetation restoration in that area, and they're going to partner with them on that around the Cozine Creek area. Another goal from the comprehensive plan is related to cultural and educational resources, and that's to provide cultural and social services commensurate with the needs of our expanding population, our community. So the applicant is M V Advancements, and they are the ones proposing this to cite a office use there. The office residential use allows for the commercial uses that they intend to put there. They're an organization that provides social services to individuals with disabilities. They selected this site due to its proximity to the downtown area, access that clients would have to other social services in that area, and also the transit access, because it is on one of our local regularly operating routes, providing access throughout the community and also to downtown and to the transit center for transfers to other transit service. Some other goals related to this request are in chapter four, which relates to the economy and providing employment opportunities for the community. And then in the chapter five, related to housing, providing the development of affordable quality housing for all city residents. So in looking at some of our most recent acknowledged planning documents in terms of our land need, our 2013 economic opportunities analysis identifies a deficit of commercial land. So this speaks to the, the change in the comprehensive plan and the zone to a commercial land use. We did note throughout the document that there is also a identified need for residential land in the most recently acknowledged buildable lands inventory, which is from 2001. That is in the process of being updated and is coming to similar conclusions, I think, but this is the most recently acknowledged one. So both the commercial and the residential are identified as land needs. The applicant is obviously proposing to go to the commercial land use and zone, and I'll touch on that just a little bit more here. Again, some of the housing goals are related to promoting affordable housing and also providing a residential development pattern that's land-intensive and allows for unique and innovative development techniques. So I mentioned that there is the deficit of R4 land identified in our long-range planning documents. So to address that, the applicant is proposing to go to the OR zone, the office residential zone. It's one, it's basically only mixed-use zone in our zoning ordinance today. It allows for both commercial uses and residential uses, all of the residential uses that would be, or most of the residential uses that would be allowed in the R4 multiple-family zone. The applicant stated that their intent is to construct up to 24 residential units on the site as a future phase. They've provided some additional evidence of supporting that restrictive covenant. It was mentioned in the letter of support from Linfield College, the current property owner. That would limit the number of units to 24, but that does still allow for those units to exist, and that those would be restricted to residential uses in conjunction with M V Advancements and their services or for senior housing, which I think which are both needed housing types in our community. Just to note, too, this wasn't really highlighted much in the materials, because it wasn't specifically related to any of the review criteria, but Linfield College, in their letter of support, did state that they didn't really have any intention of selling the property to, to a developer that would seek high-density development or maximum buildout of the property. So they have obviously agreed to sell the property to M V Advancements for the uses that they're proposing, which would still include some of the mixed use and the residential uses that are allowed under the OR zoning district. So in looking at the site for residential use, as that is a component of what they're proposing and is allowed under the, the proposed zoning district, there are a number of factors that we should look at when looking at whether a site's suitable for high-density residential. I'll just touch on briefly each of those here. The factors that are being achieved is that, is that the site's not currently committed to low-density development. It's not subject to any development limitations or, and all the existing facilities have capacity for higher-density development at this site. It's in, it's within, well, well within one-quarter mile of transit service. Transit is right on Baker Street adjacent to the site. And also, it's in close proximity to other commercially zoned property, commercial services for future residents that may live there. And it's not adjacent to low-density residential, as there's higher-density residential R4 immediately adjacent to the site. Some of the factors that aren't being achieved, one of those is access directly to a major collector or arterial. Baker Street is an arterial, but they're proposing to have the access off of Cowell Street, then connecting to Baker, which I'll touch on a little bit more in the traffic study that they provided. And then the other is adjacency to public or private open space. The Planning Commission reviewed that item and in their deliberation decided to include a condition of approval that if and when multiple families developed on the site, part of the required landscaping would be usable open space area equivalent to 7% of the site area outside of the floodplain for open space for the people that would live there. Because as you can see in the map, there isn't any other public open space within a quarter-mile of the site. The Planning Commission, during their deliberation, also included a condition, a recommended condition of approval to preserve the two large trees that are on the site. This is a photo of them here, we can see both of them. So that's included in the materials before you tonight. If you noticed, in the concept plan, it appeared that If you noticed, in the concept plan, it appeared that the applicant was already intending to preserve the largest cedar tree on the site there. So that is and would be required in any future development plan that would be submitted. The other criteria related to the comp plan and zone change is that the proposed amendment's orderly and timely, and is consistent with the surrounding land uses and development of the area. Again, this kind of shows the location of the site and shows the surrounding comprehensive plan designations. The site is right on Baker Street in an area where up and down that corridor, the Highway 99 corridor, we generally have commercial uses adjacent to the highway. So it's not inconsistent with the surrounding comprehensive plan designations. And same with the office residential zone. The property across the highway to the northwest is the site of Walgreens, and then there's other commercial properties extending north from there. And then directly across Cowles Street on the east side of Baker, there is actually other office residential zoned land. So the proposal's consistent with that. Staff also noted in the staff report that the purpose of the office residential zone, one of them is to provide a buffer between commercial and residential uses and zones. So establishing the office residential zone here would provide more of that buffer from the commercial areas on the Highway 99 corridor to the residential areas to the east. And the office residential zone also has some setback requirements for development adjacent to residential zones. So those would apply to any future development and would provide some more buffering to the residential areas north and east along Cowles Street. Finally, the last criteria is that utilities and services can be provided to serve the site. The engineering department and other utility providers, McMinnville Water and Light and others, did not provide any comments or concerns with providing adequate service to the site. One thing that we did discuss in more detail was the traffic impact analysis and the transportation planning rule analysis that was provided by the applicant. And they basically reviewed the proposed development, or what could be worst-case scenario maximum build-out of the site based on the current proposal of the office residential zone against what's allowed under the current zoning. And looking at their analysis findings, it's kind of difficult to see here, but this kind of shows the assumed distribution of traffic from and to the site. And they were assuming that 95% of the traffic is going to make its way to Baker Street and go from there. Only 5% would continue north on Cowles Street. So the intersections that were included in the analysis were the intersection of Cowles and Baker, Handley and Baker, which is just north, and then the Adams and Baker U-turn. So looking at each of those intersections, the analysis looked at the future build-out with the new development as proposed, and there wasn't any significant increases in level of service or delays at those intersections. This was reviewed by our engineering department and ODOT, because they have jurisdiction over the highway. No concerns or comments were provided with the analysis that they provided. In terms of what they used to actually calculate the proposed development and its impact, they, like I said, kind of did a worst-case scenario analysis. So they looked at the existing zoning, which has a plan development over it and doesn't really identify exactly what types of uses could occur there. But to compare something, they assumed the maximum build-out of multiple-family residential, which is the underlying R4 zone. Based on the size of the property, they could develop up to 83 dwelling units. So they use that for current existing zoning. And then for the proposed zoning of the office residential zone, they assumed the most impactful use would be an all-office development. And they assumed a certain percent of the site would be built out with buildings, and that equaled about a 50,000-square-foot office building. So those are the numbers that they used to run the analysis, and you can see there's a slight increase in the number of trips overall, but nothing substantial, nothing that impacted those intersections, as I showed in the slide before, substantially. And again, I'll just note and point out here that this assumes a 50,000-square-foot office, and they're proposing or thinking about a 10,000-square-foot office plus the residential units. The last item I want to discuss is the plan development amendment. This is really kind of a result of the previous two comprehensive plan amendment and zone changes that I discussed. The current property is located within the Linfield College Master Plan, Plan Development Overlay. All the properties owned by Linfield were included in it at the time. Since it's changing ownership and is no longer going to be associated with the college, the applicant's proposing to remove it from the plan development overlay. Staff did look through the plan in a little bit of detail, and there was even comments and goals in that plan that the college should decide whether to keep some of their outlined parcels, including this one, the Columbus School site. It also was kind of left out of a lot of the other planning elements, like their master plan for open space. They identified a park in this area, but the property to the north across the floodplain in the creek was not included in that. So for that reason, staff and the Planning Commission and their recommendation is proposing to remove this property from the existing plan development. It would effectively adjust the boundary of that to remove it. All other requirements and conditions of approval would remain in effect for that ordinance 4739. Just a quick update, the public hearing and neighborhood meeting process, they went through a neighborhood meeting with the surrounding community. About 15 people attended that neighborhood meeting from the meeting notes that were provided. None of them came to the actual public hearing, but at the public hearing, we had one item of testimony and opposition related to the loss of R4 land. Staff kind of noted some of that in our presentation and in the staff report, and the Planning Commission ultimately agreed with that in their findings. But basically, the real reason for approving the zone change in the comp plan amendment is the mixed-use zone and still having the ability to provide residential uses on the property. So with that, the Planning Commission recommendation before you today is approval of ordinance 5061, which would approve the comprehensive plan map amendment, the zone change with the two conditions related to the open space and the preservation of the trees, and then the plan development amendment, amending that existing plan development overlay boundary. At all, welcome any questions that you have at this point.
Okay, any questions for Chuck?
I have a few.
Go ahead, Remi.
Thank you. I'll get back up to the top here. Are you, if you're back at the beginning of your presentation, do you think we could, I could address some things that are on your slides specifically? Might help. Okay, so go back through down to a little further, concept, a little farther.
Let me one.
Okay, slow down here, a little further. Review criteria, no, review criteria, great, that's great. So there were a couple of things that were red flags for me here that I'd like to discuss with you. So one is the use of the criteria and the supporting documentation that's used to meet that criteria. So using housing and residential development and saying that that criteria is being met is worrisome to me on a couple of reasons. One, we're eliminating our highest-density zone entirely from this site, as opposed to perhaps a partial, partially removing it and rezoning a portion of the piece of property. And then while there's an intent expressed in the application, as you say, there's nothing legally binding, and so there's no actual guarantee that a rezone would promote this goal or stand up to this criteria. Because the, nothing in the application is actually for a multifamily residential unit. So I have concerns that that goal isn't actually being met as it pertains to this And then, do you mind going to the next slide? Okay, great. So then, this is something else where I have concerns about using this Economic Opportunities Analysis, and I'll be very frank in the reason why. While it was, I don't know the correct word, if it was adopted by this council, this was not a report that was commissioned or paid for by the city of McMinnville. This was a report that was generated by a private investor who had a, there was a very clear benefit to the outcome of the report telling us that we needed increased commercial land, which was that they had a piece of land that was not zoned commercially, and they couldn't move forward with their business until it was zoned commercially. So that really, for me, makes, while this is, while it's, there is, can, could be useful information to be gleaned from this Economic Opportunities Analysis, I hesitate to rely on it as a real source, knowing how it was funded, and that quite frankly, the information could be skewed. The other thing, so to contradict myself, the other thing is that in here, it says we need a very small amount more of commercial and quite a bit more residential. And I think that common sense for any resident of McMinnville at this time, I think we're all very aware that our residential needs currently far outweigh our commercial needs, especially as we see lots of vacancies in existing commercial buildings. So those are some of my initial thoughts on this portion of it. I did see your note that the same density would be permitted with the OR zone as with an R4 zone, and I did read Linfield's letter that says that they would not have sold to somebody that would have developed it to its full capacity. That said, there's still no actual plan here for a residential build on land that is currently zoned for residential, which is, as you know, is something that we're actively trying to do, is increase our residential land supply. So those are just my initial thoughts, and if you have any response, I'd love to hear it.
Yeah, on your first one, I think you're correct in that there is no absolute guarantee that residential uses would be developed here. Staff had supported this, and eventually the Planning Commission did, because of the proposed zone allowing for the residential use still to occur, that wouldn't take that ability away. And the current office residential zone actually allows all those uses that are allowed in the R4 zone, single-family, two-family, multiple-family condominiums, I think, are the four. And it doesn't require that you take out in your density calculations any use of the site that's under commercial. So really, if someone wanted to, it would allow someone to do an even denser development. They could do just as many dwelling units there as they could in the R4 zone, but what else would they have the office use? Now, again, we don't have any guarantee from the applicant, other than what they've stated that their intended plan is, and it's a little bit further supported by the restrictive covenant that was described in the Linfield letter of support, that they would provide 24 dwelling units in the future, but...
Well, it limits them to 24. It doesn't, it doesn't say that they will provide 24.
Right, yeah, it does. So yeah, I'd say there is no guarantee there, but because of the allowance for the multiple-family use still and the residential uses, staff thinks that that was the reason for staff supporting the proposal as is. The comments about the Economic Opportunities Analysis, yes, that one was, it was completed in 2013. It was led by the outside group, but was eventually adopted by the city and acknowledged by the state. So it is the document that we must use, and looking at what our need is currently, as you all know, we're in the process of updating that and updating those studies, but as of now, until those are done, this is the document that we have to look at in terms of our listed land need for both residential and commercial. And obviously, the residential one goes back even further than that, and we're in the process of updating that as well. So given that, those are the documents that we have to use to look at and evaluate this current proposal, so that's why they were included.
Was there any conversation internally or with the applicant about rezoning a smaller portion of the land so that, you know, this, by the time you have the building, the 10,000 square-foot building, and then the necessary parking, that's a pretty big impact on what would remain? And I don't even know if it actually would allow for a 24-unit complex with the required parking. So was there any conversation about rezoning a smaller portion of the land for the office residential so that they could pursue the offices that are intended in the application, but that we don't use up all of the residential land with a parking lot?
I'll just say that wasn't discussed specifically. I think you kind of noted on one thing that might complicate that, as you look at density requirements, and once you take out what's being used for the office use, the remainder would be residential, and then your number of units you could have would be calculated based on that. I don't know what those numbers would be based on the site area and all of that, but it wasn't specifically discussed with the applicant. This is the proposal they came in with and that we reviewed against.
I can elaborate a little bit further on that. So prior to spinning a land use application, I did sit down with the applicant and we discussed what they hope to achieve on the site, what is the best process moving forward. Our office residential zones are only really true mixed-use zone, and the way it's written in terms of development standards is it allows these two to coexist on one lot. We talked about split zoning the property. Split zoning is not, in my personal opinion, is not a great planning tool, because you have to pin the zone to the lot, and you have to understand that. And then you also have to create your development standards, and that, and our development standards are all based on the lot itself and the property lines. It gets very, very confusing. We actually encourage people not to do split zoning. But with what they were trying to achieve in terms of combining the mixed use of their office space and serving their clients with residential uses, we thought that this was a good way to bring those two uses together, use the lot as one cohesive lot to serve that, to serve those two purposes. Before you tonight is a rezone application, so it's not a site plan, it's not a master plan, it's nothing like that. It's just a rezone application to go from R4 to OR, based on the fact that they were looking for some sort of mixed-use product. It still allows all the same uses for residential primarily, or R4, and then allows additional uses there to OR.
What about what Chuck just said about kind of the density, the math requiring the density? So once they put in a 10,000-square-foot building and all the required parking, how much land would that actually leave to be able to build any number of units and with their required parking on this parcel?
So that, I would suggest, we haven't seen the engineering on this. Some of the studies, they've done a concept plan, they've done some limited engineering on it, and we have to bear that in mind.
I'll say, though, that the office residential zone, I think I kind of mentioned this already, there's nothing in there that would require you to take that area out. So you would still use the entire area to calculate the total number of dwelling units that would be allowed. So theoretically, the total number could be the same under the OR zone as it could be under the R4 zone, regardless of how much office space there is on the site. Parking comes into play, but we also allow shared parking for uses that have offset main hours of use, so you could utilize that potentially on an office residential mixed site. So there's some things we could look at with that once we get to a development plan level of discussion. I'll just say that at this point.
We're not able this evening to take... We're not able this evening to take comments from the applicant, we'd have to open up for a public hearing to do that, which we have the ability to do that if it's critical to our decision.
Right, and we would schedule that.
Yeah, yeah, we'd have to put out notice and schedule that public hearing in order to reopen the record and take additional testimony.
So, Remy, is that answers to the initial questions you had?
Yeah, and with that, I mean, with that information, that would definitely be the way that I would lean, I, I would feel like that's a very, that's very important to know, before making, for me, that's very important to know before being able to make a decision.
Okay. Let's go ahead and just continue our discussion, to see if anyone else on the council would have questions of Chuck.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Wendy.
Chuck, how does the, do the limitations that Linfield is putting on the applicant play into the city's evaluation of this change in zoning?
Um...
Because they're limiting residential to only, and the advancements?
Yes.
Residential?
Yeah, the, that covenant that's listed in their letter of support, really, I think, if you look through the decision document and the findings, wasn't really referenced. It is something that would be a private matter between the property owner and future buyer, it's nothing that we would regulate, or necessarily, well, we wouldn't require it, it would be a private matter between those two parties, nothing that the city asked for or required as part of the application's dismissal, it was submitted voluntarily, based on their private discussions.
So, I guess, part of my question is, in thinking about what we can and can't consider as the city, when we're changing it, we're saying we're adding residential, we just know as a sidebar, that we're only adding residential as long, based on the land purchase, as long as it's run by MV advancements, which is a further restriction, we don't even look, look at that as part of our evaluation, we just say there's a potential still to do residential, high-density residential, as well as, as commercial, and those two give us something we need for the city.
Correct, we're looking at just the zoning proposal before us, that was kind of supplemental information provided as part of the application.
No, I appreciated it, and I just wanted to clarify.
It's a good point to make.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions or discussions? Go ahead, Kelly.
So, as I understand it, this would not necessarily be low-income housing or subsidized housing, it, it could be any kind of housing?
Um, the zone allows for any kind of housing, the information that Wendy just noted provides some insight into the type that would be provided, I don't know that the MV advancements clients are necessarily all low-income, I don't, I just don't know that information.
Well, yeah, that's a possibility.
It could be, or senior housing, but there, there's no guarantee, zoning doesn't regulate that at all, in the zone change that we're reviewing. But the applicant has provided some information, as we discussed, in terms of the types of housing that might occur there.
But there's nothing fixed about the type of housing that would, could be there?
No.
Okay.
Other questions or discussions?
I, I did want to comment that I think this is a very innovative use of the R, or the OR housing type, and I'm glad to see that you're thinking about it and using it. I own this property that's like this, and it, it's interesting what you can do with it.
Yeah, yeah, it's the, one zone in our code that allows for a variety of different uses, smaller-scale professional office, a smaller-scale retail, and residential use, so it is kind of our most versatile zone in our, in our code today.
Sal?
I just have a comment, a few comments, I think this project plays a critical need in our community, I, I very much appreciate the staff's efforts to work to accommodate it while still trying to encourage residential development of the property, I'm satisfied completely that the legal obligations have been met, so I'm, I'm supportive of this project, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Zach, this would be in the partial, more of the discussion and disclosure, I was on the planning commission for this decision, and so I'm bringing my knowledge of this project to this role. Part of our calculus in the decision was, I guess we, we got a little, not bogged down, but discussed, the, whatever platitude it is for really high-level looking, 30,000-feet, I think it is, the, the R4 discussion is really important, right, where, where, this proposal throws out the potential of some R4, but I think when we dive down into this specific opportunity in front of us, it was this proposal on this specific piece of land with this local, these local partners, gives us the best chance of both commercial and housing on the, on the land. So, I, I see the high-level pill, bitter pill of throwing away the R4, but the calculus was that this gives us the best chance to develop housing on it as well.
Thank you, Zach.
I would concur with what Zach just said, I think with the partners that are in play and the possibility of filling a great need in the community, and they've definitely laid out their intent in their application, granted, there's nothing that we as a city can bind them to fill that, I, I'm definitely in support of it.
Yeah, and I'll add that it was really gratifying to allow, to have a, a super-local company be a part of this project, not, a not-super-local company, and allow Mid Valley to sort of consolidate some of their efforts elsewhere, scattershot, and, and really focus in, and allow that business to thrive and grow and succeed.
Thank you for those clarifications. Any other comments, Wendy?
I have one more comment, since we're making comments now, I, I actually think it's an, an ideal parcel for a mixed-use, and I love the project, I mean, I know the project isn't part of the consideration of changing the zoning, but having that commercial across the way, the residential right near it, I think it's made for office residential, and I really like the idea of not only seeing mixed-use, but also seeing mixed-use that specifically targets a group that MVP, I mean, MV advancements, sorry, MV advancements serves, which I think it's a, a great project and a great location for it, so I'm really strongly in support of considering all of the factors of this application and the zone change, so.
Great.
I too, think it's a good project, I, I just, like, Remy would like to see more low, or, you know, low-income housing or subsidized housing, but I think it's a good project.
If I may say, I'm not against the project by any means, it's just that the project is not what we're, we're, we're not approving the project, and, and even the project as it is laid out here, is not a project that does include residential at this time, it only includes a hypothetical residential at some point down the road. And so, you know, with that, with, with knowing really the intent is immediately to build a, a large office, not a large mixed-use facility, that is what gives me concern. And I did note that the planning commission did recommend this, but it also was not a unanimous recommendation, so clearly, there was a lot of back and forth on the planning commission, otherwise, it probably would have come to us with a unanimous approval, so by no means is this a, is my, are my concerns here having anything to do with MV advancements or a lack of trust in their company, it's just that intent is intent, and it is not, it is not a plan, and they're not bound to that plan, and so similarly, they could purchase this, rezone it, things could change, and they could sell it, and somebody could just put in a huge, 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 huge store and no residential, so the...
No, only office.
Or, or office, right.
Yeah, you could put in an office, but you could also develop it solely for residential too.
You, you could, but that is not, that is not the...
Consider the high-end situation.
Right, but that is not the, that's not the intent, and so we're giving away, in my perspective, the possibility of guaranteeing that it's used in some way for residential use, so it is, it's not a lack of wanting to see the, the project come to fruition, the, it's a concern that, you know, in, in reality, things, things change, and, and by changing the zoning, it opens up the possibility of this land being used for things other than residential, and that it could potentially never see any residential use.
I think that's unlikely, but, and again, I'm just speculating, but there's also funding issues and things like that, if the primary issue is to build an office building, but why not actually add residential to it too? I, I would think over the long haul, they probably are likely to.
Potentially, but we don't even have the engineering to know that it would allow for that, once the, once the office is in.
Points well taken. Any further discussion? Hearing none, then just to remind you, what we're looking at right now is I'm going to ask for a motion to pass ordinance number 5061 to a second reading, okay? Moved.
Second.
It has been moved by Sal and seconded by Kelly, all those in favor, please signify by...
Well, Mr. Mayor, may I ask that we delay a second reading in order to have time to get a, a little bit more information, especially specific to the engineering, to know whether or not a residential development is even feasible, once the intended office structure is in?
We've got a motion in front of us, and we can vote on that, we've got a motion in a second.
We have a parliamentary proceeding.
Go ahead.
Question, so if Remy votes no, it'll get carried over to the next meeting.
So, again, what we have in front of us is ordinance number 5061 for a second reading, it's been moved by Sal, and it's been seconded by Kelly, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those in opposition, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Okay, this, there's such a decision tree, okay? This, this motion passes with dissent, and so ordinance number 5061 passes by a vote of five to one on its first reading, and will be brought back for a second reading on...
Don't read that date.
Okay.
It's on the table.
It will be February 12th, February 12th, and, and so that's, that's where we sit right now. Thank you. That takes us to the advice and information items this evening, and we've got an opportunity to have reports from councillors on committee and board assignments, I'll go ahead and start with Adam.
We had a YCOM meeting, but we had lack of quorum, so we did get an operations report, and overall, things seem to be going good with the new CAD, there's some end-user just kind of getting up with the times and training and things like that in various departments, so entered formal talks with Dundee on exploring the possibility of them coming in, and we're going to start our, looking at this year's fees and this year's budget in the next few meetings, and adopt that, I believe, in April or May. And airport commission meeting, we had our first one of those last Tuesday, and that was good, we had a proposal by Jerry Trimble Helicopters to extend their 10-year module or lease that expires in about three years to the end of 2037, and that was denied, and that was after a good amount of discussion, so I think they still feel appreciated out there, but understood where we were coming from, from the feedback that I could see, and lots of exciting things happening out there, it's an opportunity zone, so I think we'll see more investment out there in the next five years than we've probably seen in the last two decades, for the possibility of such.
Thank you, Adam. Sal?
We have not had a council of governments meeting since our last city council meeting, there is a board meeting on Thursday afternoon. One data point, the, the unemployment rates for the Mid Valley counties were released, Yamhail County at 3.8 percent, just slightly below the state average of 3.9.
And Sal, the Cog Dinner is when?
The Cog, I'll have to give you the date, I don't have it.
Okay, and just remind us when the, the final date to sign up for that would be, I know, I, I want to go to it, but I have to check if my wife's in town.
On the 20th of February.
Okay, February 20th, and then I think we have till the beginning of February, Melissa, to make a determination whether we're going to go, if I'm not mistaken, so, okay. And I would suggest that we represent ourselves well at the Cog Dinner if all possible. Kelly?
Visit McMinnville, as always, is a very interesting meeting, spent major time discussing five different small ways to experience McMinnville and how to really enjoy it, one of them being a girls' weekend, and farmers' markets, and things like that, so that look, we have to look forward to, we are doing our strategic planning for Visit McMinnville on the 25th of February, and that's it for me.
Thank you. We'll go down to Zach.
I've had the opportunity to liaise on my first committee.
[laughing]
Yes, no, not Historic Landmarks, uh, Landscape Review Committee, Landscape Committee, we had one meeting, I met with Jamie Fleckenstein beforehand, and discussed my role as liaison on that committee with him, and how I could best be a tool at his disposal, introduced myself to the committee, the committee had fairly normal business for the most part, except for they discussed the future, potential future issue of note in the errant removal of a tree by the Taylor Dale Building and that project, which was an interesting discussion, as well as they adopted their work plan, which is aggressive and exciting, and I'll be meeting with the Historic Landmarks Committee tomorrow, I'm very excited to liaise with Chuck.
Great, thank you, Zach. Remy?
Tomorrow's a meeting of the McMinnville Affordable Housing Task Force at 10:00 a.m.
Thank you. Wendy?
Urban Renewal meets on the first Wednesday, so I don't have anything to report.
Okay. A couple of things that I've got, remember Thursday is a city day at the Capitol, my understanding, as I, as I see it right now, Wendy and Sal, you're going to be there, hopefully in the morning, because you've got commitments in the afternoon, so you'll have the opportunity to hear the presentation from the governor and the leadership of the Senate and the House, myself, Kelly, David possibly, and are you going, Zach? So, if we want to touch bases tonight, we could carpool for those that are going to stay, I don't think any of us are going to stay for the reception part, so we'll go through the morning part, and then the meetings with Representative Noble, have we heard back from Bullquist? Okay, so we'll see if we can get into Brian, we should be able, I mean, it's the day, and we're one of their constituents, one of their, one of his larger constituents, so we'll see what we can do from that perspective, after that, then we'll come back to MAC. Let me share with you, we had a Parkway Committee meeting last Thursday, and had a good discussion about the lack of, of ODOT, who has dollars to buy Right-Away, they've been talking about the purchase of Right-Away, they've been actively talking, but all it is, is talk right now, and until we can zero in on Right-Away and purchase that, that money's just sitting, and the value of those properties continue to go up, and so we're looking to be pretty aggressive with ODOT in holding their feet to the fire to move forward. We've got, we've got, we've got 22 million, we've got 32 in the proposed governor's budget, plus we have some savings from Phase 1 that we don't even know how much that is, so we've got enough to make some, some directional changes from that perspective. We see a window of opportunity, and I've shared this with all of you, with Representative Peter DeFazio being the head of the Transportation and Infrastructure Appropriations Committee, and so there is a group of, I think, six individuals going back to Washington DC, and we will be there on the 25th... and we will be there on the 25th and the 26th, meeting with our representatives back there, talking about the completion of the bypass. And that's our new mantra. It's the completion of the bypass. We're no longer going Phase 2 or Phase 3. We just want to, if we're going to, if we're going to move forward in a meaningful approach, this may be a one-time infrastructure bill that might be in front of us. We want to go for completion. And so, we're working on that. We're going to be in front of Midwolamit Transportation Advisory Committee to the Department of Transportation Committee. I'm taking the spot of Mayor Bob Andrews on that Midwolamit Transportation Committee, and so that's my charge as I'm going there. So, more to come. The other piece is that we're making a change in assignments, and Sal is going to be taking the council, the councilperson's position on the Parkway, representing McMinnville with his ties locally, at the state level. We felt he brings great avenues for us to have discussion at that level. Kelly will have a, a newly-developed kind of at-large position for two years to remain, because she has such longevity from that perspective. The committee, including the county, wants to retain her on that. So, that's the changes that are happening as it relates to transportation and the bypass. Today, Chief Lippert and Jeff, myself, and Kelly had an opportunity to have a lunch meeting with the Amity Fire District. And you know, we've been in communication with them. We're providing ambulance services down there, and that has been working very effectively. Today, we met with the, their fire board, understanding that Amity's fire department isn't a part of the city, but they have their own rural fire protection, and, and it's, it's, it's governed by a board of directors. And that's who we met with today, talking about the opportunity for McMinnville providing administrative and training oversight for that rural fire district. Their fire chief is retiring, and this is a way to bring some economies to scale. And so, I'll just leave it at that. Jeff, do you have any more insights into that that you'd like to share?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Chief Lightford would be here to talk with you about this tonight, but he's attending a similar meeting in West Valley right now in Sheridan, related to the conversations those two districts are having. The discussion right now is the prospect of the city providing administrative support and training in the absence of their full-time chief who's retiring at the end of the fiscal year. The idea would be that we would have our admin staff, primarily our fire chief, but perhaps one of our other administrative chiefs, serving on-site in Amity on a weekly basis, and that we would, in addition, hire a training, a chief of training, who would coordinate and implement training for both the fire district and the city. It would add some additional capacity for us to pursue added conversations with other fire service providers in the area, and I think it's a kind of an initial first step towards the possibility of a larger district at some point in the future. In terms of timing, I think we'll see a second draft of an agreement, which is probably a pretty near-final version, as well as some talking points that describe the value of pursuing the agreement from both the district and the city's perspective in early to mid-February. We'll, we'll share that information with the council. The fire board was very intent about some thoughtful and intentional engagement with stakeholders and partners over the next several weeks, and at this point, I would expect an issue would come forward for the council's consideration, perhaps at your second meeting in March, but more likely your second meeting in April, which would allow ample time for us to do a recruitment and fill that training chief's position and work through any other details. Looking forward to a July 1 implementation.
Thank you, Jeff. And it, it was a good dialogue, a very good dialogue, and was very happy that, that Council President Menke and myself were able to be there, because they saw the intent of the city to bring all the players to the table, and we gave them a perspective of what we felt your feeling might be towards that. It's an area that we've spent much time and we have much concern on having, you know, economies of scale and being able to do what we need to do from a fire perspective. The last thing that I have is reminding everyone that on Tuesday, January 29th, at 4:30, we will be having the State of the City here in this building and the Second Annual Awards Reception. We had a, a, a very eventful drive-run today, and Jeff did very well. That's all I can tell you. No, we had a really good, we have a lot of players that are assisting us, and we've, we will have presentations from MCM of some of the big things that we've been able to accomplish. Jeff's going to be presenting the strategic plan overview for those in attendance. I will be doing the State of the City and represent, and also awarding three pillars of the community and one legacy award this year. And so, looking really forward. So, again, if you could just make sure from a council, because we're going to recognize anyone that's there, from the city council, it will connect everyone to this community. And so, from that perspective. Okay, let's go around to department heads. Chief, Kaylee, Marcia, thank you for your presentations tonight. Chuck, thank you for your presentation tonight. A very complicated and, and lot of, a lot of discussion to bring that to us tonight, and that was very well done. Heather?
Yeah, I have one. We were scheduled to transition our permitting software this Monday, January 28th. Over the long weekend, there was a hiccup with the data conversion at the state level, so all our data converted into the new software. We are now looking at a tentative Monday, February 4th, transition to our new permitting software. We'll get the message out to our community, but we've been working hard to let everyone know about our transition and setting up training opportunities for our development community to participate as we go online. It will allow for electronic permitting terminals, which will submit from home, and also credit card transactions, which are two things that we're trying to develop.
Does that mean, oh, sorry, does that mean that the fee increases also are delayed till February 4th?
The fee increases are separate items that are documented, they're just going to be reported forward or programmed over, because it's all building software.
And so, I would guess, Heather, that this software is very exclusive to the planning group in that it's a software base around what you're doing, because we're doing that at Parks and Rec, if I'm not mistaken, right now. So, those aren't going to be systems that are connected. It'll be a standalone ability.
Yeah, this software, we have, we have a lot for planning enforcement, public works and building.
Okay.
And that water flight is on it as well as one of our partners, the web-based program. It's all free from state. So, it will be a great program once we get there. We're just working through the last minute push. I'm happy to say, on the city side, we were, you know, ready to go and ready to go with the opportunity to be.
Good. Thank you. Melissa, David, and Jeff, any-
So, just, I had a robust conversation with Eric Jensen from Jensen Strategies this afternoon. He's in the final stretch of completing a detailed agenda for the team building and work with the executive team for the council on Friday. Reminder that you'll be meeting at 8:30 in the morning at the police department and in for a good and challenging day, I suspect. Looking forward to it, and I hope you are, too.
Thank you.
Like police challenge course stuff?
Yeah, when you push me off the cliff, please catch me, okay?
No trust fall.
No trust fall. Thank you, everyone, and we'll close our meeting this evening. Thank you.